The time is now 7:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And before we start this evening, I would just like to have a moment of silence for the victims of the Texas floods. There's a lot of bad things going on in the world, and there's many even within our own community who have been affected by this tragedy. So I just want to take a quick moment of silence and send them your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. And just a brief announcement, I, as the Town Council President, will not be in attendance at the next regular scheduled meeting, July 21st, due to a prior commitment outside of work. So Counselor Durkin, President Pro Tem, will be running that meeting on July 21st. So next is our Town Manager's Update. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. A few updates for us on some of the staff. DPW Director Steve Dano, he recently graduated from the Municipal Leadership Academy, which is run by the League of Cities and Towns. The program is a scholarly four-month program for municipal staff serving in a supervisory role or pursuing one in the near future. Congratulations to Steve. It's a great program. Thank you. And our Town Clerk, who's sitting right next to me, Sarah Masson, she recently achieved her Certified Municipal Clerk Certification, which is quite an achievement involving a long process to success. Additionally, she's working towards her Certified Master Clerk Certification, a further advancement of credentialing. And Sarah also completed the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust Program, manages as leaders roles and responsibilities of supervisors. Congratulations to Sarah. And both of their participation in these programs, it's a testament to their professionalism and their quest to continue to learn in their roles, and I thank them both for it. Four new recruits will be attending the Municipal Police Training Academy starting Monday, August 4th. Upon graduation, they will bring the PD to their full complement. There's some questions that have been surfacing about Boone Street lately with the increased traffic and the summer month coming. We received one noise complaint of record for July 2nd. It was checked at the caller's property, according to police report, and was below the limit at that point. There is a two-person detail that's posted since July 1st for officers to be on foot or using the gator or a vehicle. That was posted from July. They filled it except for the 4th of July because, no, the fireworks on the 3rd of July, they weren't able to do it. Officers did take multiple self-initiated call screens for noise, parking, and traffic-related matters with no issues reported. We did do a speed survey on Boone Street and found that the average speed of 1,442 vehicles was 22 miles an hour and a 25, and 99.2% of the vehicles were traveling at a speed lower than 30. Only eight vehicles were going faster than 30. Speed does not seem to be a prevalent issue over there. We also have a visible speed reader there. It's posted on Boone Street since a complaint from another business as well. It gives people a little visual to them to see if they are speeding. There's an increased presence of CSOs in the area who issue the tickets. Police have already been shortposting for quite a while at closing time without issues, so at 1:00 they're in the area. Curbing close to the corners has been highlighted yellow to highlight the no parking areas. We placed signage in the northbound and southbound lanes of the approaching sidewalk and where the sidewalk is. It's not all complete yet. I think four of them are up now, and we have a bollard-type sign that we're going to put up the end of the sidewalks to make them more visible. And a parking space was removed that was adjacent to the crosswalk in front of Boone Street Market, and the current paint in that location is temporary. The director said the lamps on Boone Street have their intensity increased by 15% to give more visibility for pedestrians and bicyclists, and we will raise that if necessary. And over the last few days, approximately 1,000 parking tickets were issued, and 19 or so were issued in the Boone Continental Congdon area, and they're going to continue to pay attention to that area. And that's about it.
And of course, the final announcement that I guess maybe you just forgot, the Philharmonic, of course, is this Friday evening, and we're all very much looking forward to that, and that will be at what time? Are we telling everyone to be there?
The Philharmonic?
Yes.
Michelle, what's your best time?
Anytime after 6:00 PM. So again, if you're in the community and you happen to have nothing else planned on Friday, please come down. It's a really wonderful event that the Philharmonic puts on for the town of Narragansett. It gets a lot of residents and tourists and community members together to really enjoy that very special evening. So, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Jim? All right. So next is the Approval of Minutes. Is there a motion to approve as presented the items B1 and B2?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed as 5-0. Passing this down. Thank you. Before we continue, I did receive a notification about Agenda Item K1. I believe that was your item, Counselor Durkin. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have any comment on that Agenda item?
I just want to make it comfortable for people that, so they don't have to wait, that we're going to pull that from the agenda. I didn't realize how much work it would be for staff during mid-season. I didn't really, I didn't realize that, how some of the people use the passes, so. Well, I think it would be best just to review that in the fall when we come up with the beach policies for next year.
Excellent. So we're going to remove item K1 from the agenda this evening. So next is our Open Forum Public Comments this evening. As a reminder, the comments of citizens addressing the council are neither adopted nor endorsed by the body but heard as requested. Please take note that public comment will not be taken on matters involving open litigation. If you have not signed in to speak, we will also see if you would like to speak as well. Please state your name and address. Speak only on topics not on the meeting agenda, and a three-minute time limit will be given to each speaker. Please speak orderly and respectful. And Jim, do we have anyone who has signed up?
The first that's signed up is Rosemary and David Smith.
And we'll not ask for six minutes.
Thank you.
Rosemary and David Smith, Castle Road, Narragansett. Good evening, members of the Town Council. We are urging the Town Council to complete the South County Bike Path to the Town Beach and make other improvements for greater pedestrian, bicycle, and motor vehicle safety. There are three recent developments that we know of that are pointing us in the right direction. First, in April of 2025, Eric Weiss made a presentation to the Town's Council describing the Narragansett Safe Streets for All, which is, has the acronym SS4A, Action Plan, with the list of 26 Action Plan items to make Narragansett a safer place for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. If the Town Council adopts the plan, the town is eligible for fund, for state funding to cover the cost of implementation, but it is only good for one more year. Secondly, Depreed Engineering has completed its William C. O'Neill Bike Path 4B Due Diligence Report. This report completes the review of alternatives for the final segment of the bike path. This study evaluates the most recent suggestion from 2024 from the previous Town Council to connect the Narragansett Community Center to the Town Beach. Finally, the Rhode Island Division of Statewide Planning has opened up the public comment period for the Rhode Island Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as the STIP. This draft specifies projects to be done in a 10-year period starting in September of 2025. Funding for the William C. O'Neill South County Bike Path has survived from the previous state transportation program at $3 million, but is pending an agreement between the Town of Narragansett and the Department of Transportation on the selection of a route. It is Narragansett's move to make.
Before the Transportation Improve Program is finalized, there are two hearings for public comment on July 10 in North Kingston and July 16 in Providence. We plan to testify on the 10th as advocates for the completion of the bike path on behalf of the Friends of the South County Bike Path. The fatal bicycle crash on Saturday in North Kingston and one, one year ago on Boston Neck Road remind us of the need to create safe streets for all. There is much to do to complete the bike path, and there is many more things to do to make it safe for all users, including markings and signage on Boston Neck Road. Time for action is now, and we thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christina Decomas.
Christina Decomas, 130 Daytona Avenue. I'd just like to speak to the council about the fact that you were elected to represent the residents of Narragansett, not just the commercial interests, not just the developers. I certainly hope in going forward, you listen to the residents, because if not, this will be the council that will change the entire complexion of this town. Changes that we've seen take place already, a lot of residents oppose, a lot of residents are opposed to many changes that are being proposed, and we certainly hope that you would listen with open ears and with much thought given to changes that you plan on making.
Thank you.
Dr. Al Alba.
Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace, Narragansett Island. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Town Manager, and all the dignitaries, all our staff members. I want to congratulate, as always, Michelle Kershaw for doing an outstanding job, Hoxner Creations. I actually went to the concert the other day, and it was beautiful. I was just wondering, just for consideration, that when the beach is very crowded, say on weekends and holidays, maybe we can have a periodic announcement, maybe once every hour that, please, no smoking, no drinking, behave, no horseplay. I know there was a fight on the beach, so I think being proactive. I know we have Jaws coming up, which would be great. That's Movies on the Beach, I think it's this Wednesday, and we do have to recognize that in the past, you know, there was a fight, horseplay, I guess teenagers whatever might be, but maybe we can have an announcement before the Movies on the Beach saying, please, let everyone be on good behavior, no horseplay, no smoking, no drinking. You know, you got to respect this because at one time, sadly, we had to stop the Movies on the Beach for the summer because of the activities on, maybe some juvenile is what it might be. And for the South Beach parking lot, I know Councilman Torialdi brought this up before, that maybe during the weekdays, maybe we can open it up if it's maybe half-empty by 11:00 AM to maybe encourage more people to park there who might be, don't have the season passes, so that's, that's a consideration as well. And another consideration, it'd be nice if the town maybe consider a grant writer. I don't know if we have one or not, but I know the previous Town Council mentioned this, and I know recently, South Kingston, they, they obtained a $100,000 grant to maintain its trails. So if we get a grant writer who's very proficient, that, that grant writer can more than, more than make up for the salary we might be paying him or her if he, she can bring a lot, a lot-needed revenue into the town. So it's just a consideration. It's my hope that the town bids for Camp Cronin. To me, it's a priceless gem. It'd be a shame to lose this to a developer. So I hope you all consider that. I don't want, you know, nothing wrong with Prox Antipathy, they're great people, but they're businessmen, let's face it. And if they take it over, who knows? I don't want them to start charging for parking at Camp Cronin, you know? We have enough parking lots. We don't need any more street-level parking lots. We've got enough parking lots in Galilee. So I hope we can fight for that, hopefully we could look for that priceless gem so we can have some kind of a, maybe affordable housing or even, even just camp for the kids. But we really don't want to lose that, so hopefully we can look into that. The old library, I know we had an RFP once, but maybe we can look into extent to putting another RFP out, if that's a viable property that we can hopefully maybe afford. So thank you very much for your time and for listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Brady.
I don't want to waste the council's time right now. I don't know procedurally on the whole, on the motion to vote for the workshop, if you're going to allow comments or you're just going to vote for it.
As a scheduling item, we don't normally ask for comment. You may, you may speak as you will. And just so you know, Mr. Brady, in your absence, we did receive a series of recommended dates by Ms. Abo as to when the planning board would be able to meet.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much. I committed to this council and, and will continue to do so to try to, at every point, keep open communications for us. So I'm here to ask, on behalf of the board, if you might pass on to us any and all information that can help us help you. What are you thinking? What direction are you going in? Why, the big thing is, what's your vision? Why, why do you want to make these changes? And we can better help you that way. Without that, we're kind of going in blind, and it's not going to probably be as, as efficient as all of us would like to be. In addition to keeping that communication open, Mr. Chair, we had a phone call, we had a phone conversation way back, and I assure you, you don't remember it, but at the time when you folks were rescheduling the 14, I had asked for a little breather in it, and I understand that you guys are working on a timetable, but just again, to, to give you some communication and give you some insight, what we have before us right now, we have 10 new ordinances that just came down from the state that we have to get to you. We have three from you already that we have to get into. We have six subdivisions that are on a legal time clock. We have only so much, so many days to get the hearings done and get those few people so they can get their buildings built. We have seven additional that are on the cusp of going live. We have three more that are in the beginning stages. We have two workshops with you coming up. We have three meetings of our own this month alone, plus a possible addition. The comprehensive plan has come to a complete standstill. That takes five years. We have two. So if you could see it, to give us some breathing room and give us a few months on these ordinances. I respect that this is something you have a timetable in your minds generally or whatever, and you want, you're committed to get it done, but can you give us some breathing room? It's not just our board. The staff is drowning. If they had six more people, they couldn't handle this load right now. And we have to focus on those because that's your priority. All of this is a standstill. Nothing is being done on these. Like, I don't want to say nothing, but on a great deal of these, nothing is being done. And if we continue with this, we're going to be in legal trouble on a lot of fronts. So please, I'm just doing it to give you communication, to give you insight of what's going on, not only with the board, but the staff is, is drowning right now. So please, if you could see it, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you can get us any information, insight as to what your vision is, where you're going, we would greatly appreciate that. We could hit the floor running and, and really expedite things. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just as a quick comment back, I'm not going to engage in a back-and-forth conversation at this time, but I do want to let you know that I think, and I will not speak for the individuals who put this item on the agenda, but it is, would be my understanding that that would be the exact purpose of this workshop, would be to review the intentions, the reviews, anything that is going to be proposed. And, you know, I think we're trying to do the process correct this time by workshopping, and, you know, as you're well aware, there is no hard deadline when it comes to workshops. So again, appreciate the transparency and the openness, so.
Yeah, we're just trying to help you. That's all. And, and the more information you can give us, the better we can come back to you and more precise.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Selwyn.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Paul Selwyn. I live right around the corner at 18 Robinson Street. Now, many of you are new to the Town Council. You've never done this before. When you were running for office, you, you're not allowed to come over to the community center and come inside the building to, you know, to visit at lunch or to do any kind of campaigning, but there was a woman who came over to the community center, and she got permission from somebody in Town Hall to use one of the rooms to set up a table and take names for a petition to recall members of the Town Council. Now, I don't understand how if you can't go in there, you have to stay on the sidewalk. Someone who wants to remove you and take your job has the ability to go inside the building to conduct that, taking your job away from you after you've been duly elected. But that, bringing that up, I guess that person, Mrs. Gullcroft, backed off and decided not to use the room in the building. But now I'm hearing that there's someone else floating around who's trying to also get a petition going again. I thought that was a dead issue, but apparently it may be going on again. I just want to get it straight that they really shouldn't be coming over there at lunchtime or anytime and going inside the building to set up, you know, a room to take names for a petition. You know, they should have to do what you all did, which is walk around town and bang on all the doors and get signatures. It's a lot of work, and that's what you have to do when you want to be a Town Council person. So why should somebody who isn't on the council get to use the facilities of the town to basically take your job? Anyway, that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the list. The list is exhausted.
All right. Excellent. I saw Ms. Lawler first, and then I'll go to you. I saw Ms. Lawler first and then I'll go to you, Ms. Celeberto.
Hi, Jill Lawler, Sarasota Avenue. I have to correct the last speaker. That did not occur. Ms. Scowcroft did arrange to pay, to pay to use a room at the community center, which is allowed by town law, and she ended up canceling it. So what was just alleged by the individual did not occur. It was on the up and up. Any individual in this town can rent out that building if they want to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Celeberto?
Catherine Celeberto, 48-year-old's court. There's been a lot of changes in procedure as far as getting a special use permit, variances, all of that. So I guess the procedure is now, there's an ad put in the paper and it lists everything that someone wants. In this particular case, this person wanted to expand a five-bedroom house to a seven-bedroom house and then add an ADU with two bedrooms and also wanted variances from the lot line. I happened to look up this house and it's being taxed as a four-bedroom, even though it's being presented as a five-bedroom. In any event, I filed an objection. I thought that, given the expansion, that the neighbors should be notified and, you know, it should be looked at a little more, not just a rubber stamp. And that's all it would have been if nobody objected. Now I filed an objection and I haven't heard anything. So I don't know how this works. How does this work? Somebody files an objection and it just goes over to the air someplace and nobody responds to you? So I'd like to, you know, straighten that out in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, excuse me, would anyone else wish to speak for open forum? Yes.
Yes, my name is Robert St. Germain. I live at 7 Continental Street. And I'm here about the parking issue, the noise issue, and the non-response from the police department when I've called them multiple times to come about parking. I live right on Continental and they have people parking on both sides of the street. It's a safety issue. If you had a fire truck, you couldn't get down, a police car couldn't get down. And the last time that I called was about a week and a half ago and I understand that they kept on their log, so if you want to check the log, it's there. But the last time I talked to the dispatcher, she told me that as soon as the officer was done with his last call, he would respond. Officer never responded. The people who go around handing out the parking tickets, a car, four of them showed up. They walked up and down the street, did not issue one ticket, got in their car and left. They were told, do not issue tickets on basketball nights. And the noise in that neighborhood, if you live there, I live a block and a half away from the Boone Street Market and I can hear it at 10:30, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. It's ridiculous. And as far as that report with the average speed, that must have been done during the day because it wasn't done at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for open forum? Yes.
Mark Crook, 161 Boone Street. Good evening, council. We have, on the 21st, I believe, another hearing coming up on Boone Street Market. So with the new information of Mr. Menzies not being available, I would request that that get moved. It is imperative that Mr. Menzies be at that hearing. The issues with Boone Street Market continue. This weekend, July 4th weekend, the 3rd, the 4th, the 5th are the worst that there has been so far this summer. The noise issue, the 3rd, the 4th, and the 5th was just unbelievable. You know, we have discussed this at hearings, we've discussed this in many different avenues here and venues. We have some current meetings going on with the town manager present, but nothing at this point of anything significant has changed the situation. And again, I think it's imperative that Mr. Menzies be present at this next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak who hasn't been able to do so? Yes.
I also was disappointed to find you wouldn't be able to be there. I think it is also imperative that the full council be there.
Oh, sorry. Can you just state your name?
I will. David Byrd, 23 Perkins Avenue, Narragansett. Sorry.
Nope, no worries.
As I said, it's imperative. We've waited a year. We had a four-month hearing. They needed more time. The noise has not subsided. Nothing has been done about it. They've now had eight months. It's time for a hearing that really helps to make a difference in that endeavor. We've done some things. Mr. Chan went over them. But I'm disappointed to hear that while we, the neighbors in that neighborhood, many within 200 feet, misconstrued at the point of it being accepted for 129 individuals, find out that after planning, after zoning, after the council, suddenly it's 429 or whatever the number is. Those types of things don't add credibility to our ability to live in that neighborhood. We have noise readings above 65 on the vast majority of weekends going back three months. And unless I misconstrued, Mr. Tierney said there were no readings that were positive, which it's just very disappointing to find that 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock weekend, on Sunday night, 9 to 11, a live band. This council told them that in fact they were to stop live music at 9 o'clock. It's disrespectful to the community, the residents in this council, to blatantly, a week, two weeks before a hearing, to have live music until 11 o'clock and continue live noise until 1:00. These are the types of things I hope to be able to speak more positively now. And I think there are some things that are done. The group meeting between Boone Street Market that has been participated by Mr. Tierney and police chief. At the last meeting, I understand, and it was, there was some difficult discussions that took place in an attempt to move things forward. We appreciate that. We appreciate your response to my memo earlier in the week. I think those are steps forward. I think the community coming together in terms of the residents, providing a shortened process for the police to be able to take readings, I think is a positive that will follow through with Mr. Tierney. But we certainly don't want it to be just kicked down the road. It's not a problem. It is a safety issue. It is too much traffic. Trying to take a bike down Boone Street, trying to take a bike down Ocean Road this last weekend was very dangerous. I know we're going to talk about the parking issue at the park, but that particular corner there, you have to get off your bike. They're coming out backwards, they're coming down on both sides, they're turning on the corner. You have to get off your bike and it's just not safe. Enough, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for open forum who hasn't done so already? Seeing none. Moving on to public hearing, thank you. Is there, before we go into opening this, Councilor Durkin, do you have any comment on this? Are you going to recuse yourself or?
I'll have to recuse myself, so I'll just sit down next to Celeberto.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Durkin is accusing himself to the remainder of this council. Sorry, that would just bother me. Is there a motion to open and hold a public hearing on an application for a transfer of a Class B vixhuling tavern alcohol beverage license from The Break LLC DBA, The Break Hotel and Chair 5 Restaurant to a Class B vixhuling alcohol beverage license for Roof Deck Dining LLC DBA Chair 5 located at Assessor's Platte L Lot 237-A 1208 Ocean Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. So we are now reviewing this liquor license. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item?
Excuse me, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you soundly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
I do, Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Ness. Albert, A-L-B-E-R-T, Alba, A-L-B-A.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm pro-business and never heard any complaints of The Break Hotel. I hear it's a top-class place, so I'm fully in support of this. I think the owner does a great job operating it and I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Seeing none. Maybe Sarah, could you or James provide just a quick comment, whoever the better expert is here, on just what the current liquor license situation is and what is being proposed here? And then I'll turn it to the council for final comment. And I apologize for putting you on the spot. I wasn't expecting there to only be one.
I think I have the conditions as they are now.
Sure.
Alcohol service ends at 1:00 a.m. inside the establishment. Alcohol service ends at 11:00 p.m. in the outside locations. Entertainment limited to one-to-two-piece combination, low acoustic, not amplified music. Entertainment limited to 10:00 p.m. outside. Entertainment allowed up to closing inside the establishment. I think those are the basic conditions, which I believe you would request continue during the transfer.
Excellent. And just one final question. Why would this be, why is this being brought forth to the council now as opposed to at a later time, like when all other liquor licenses are being considered?
I think it's just a part of the process when their situation occurred. It's not like we're creating a new license, which would happen at some later point.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions, comments on this before we move to close? All right, excellent. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Finally, item C3. Is there a motion to approve an application for a transfer of a Class B vixhuling tavern alcohol beverage license from The Break LLC DBA, The Break Hotel and Chair 5 Restaurant to a Class B vixhuling alcohol beverage license for Roof Deck Dining LLC DBA Chair 5 located at Assessor's Platte L Lot 237-A 1208 Ocean Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, with the previously approved restrictions subject to state and local regulations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone from the public? We've already talked about it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. I would welcome Councilor Durkin back up to the stage. The next items are consent agenda. There was a request to consider consent agenda item D2 separately, so that will be considered separately. So in one motion, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items D1, D3, and D4?
Motion to approve D1. Go ahead.
D1, D3, D4.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, Councilor Bignelli, you voted, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Vote passes 5-0. And on the consent agenda item D2 is a motion to approve the request from the Boston chapter of BMW CCA Rhode Island Group for the annual BMW Show and Shine Car Show at Veterans Memorial Park on Sunday, August 24, 2025, subject to state and local laws. Ms. Celeberto, would you like to come up and comment?
Catherine Celeberto, 48-year-old's court. I think it's on.
Oh, sorry. Can, is, do we need a motion to consider before?
Motion.
I don't think so. I think it's only when we vote. Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay. I want to object to this show being held at Veterans Park. When a private entity asks to use public space, the first thing you should ask is, what public good will result? I don't know what public good. There will be no public good that will result from this. This is a private group that's coming down from Boston. I guess they discovered Narragansett and they found out that to have an event at Veterans Park, it's free because there's no cost attached to it, because nobody uses Veterans Park usually except, you know, the Lions Club, art show, the Rotary, you know, all nonprofits, public type thing. Well, they've been doing this, for I'm concerned, for way too long. So I've objected to this in the past and I said, gee, if you're going to do it, at least make them give a contribution to a local charity. First year, $100 to Johnny Cake Center, and they've been giving like $100 to Johnny Cake Center, $100 to Galilee House. My husband has a saying, "Don't unbutton your shirt or your heart will fall out." This is absurd. We've got probably $2.5 million worth of cars coming down here and they are offering $100. This is just totally, there's no need for this. So I went on maps, right? You know how many parks there are between Boston and here that they could have this car show at? A plethora of them, that's all I can say. So I would really like you just to stop this, just stop it. It's totally unnecessary. It's not a nonprofit. It's just a bunch of people with BMWs, you know, shining them up, you know, sitting, you know, parking them at Veterans Park and then they all vote and they give, and they all vote, they all vote, then they give one of them a trophy. It's just nutso, okay? So I prefer that that don't happen and I think that the parks should be freed that day for, maybe, maybe it's going to be a nonprofit event, who knows? Or people go over there and they sit with their lawn chairs and that's the point of that park. It's a Veterans Park and it's supposed to be for veterans to go and, you know, sit and contemplate, but just for the general public to use, not for something like this. Thank you. Oh, and I sent the guy an email. I said, "Which one of your members are residents?" No response. So I don't even think any of them are even residents. They just discovered Narragansett. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops. So Jim, just a quick question. How many years has this been going on in Narragansett?
14, I believe you're the sixth or the seventh council that's approved it.
Okay.
Or it's been, it was approved in previous councils and now it's presented to you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any comments or questions?
Only comment, I suppose, would be perhaps moving forward, we look to set a particular fee regarding the rental of the field. You know, more so than just a suggested donation, maybe we set a particular fee, but that's my thoughts.
It would be interesting to review. I mean, just as a question for the Rotary, is there a fee when the art show happens?
Don't know for certain, but I believe, I don't believe there is.
Okay, thank you. So any other final questions, comments?
I mean, I do think it brings people down to the area and supports businesses and restaurants and I think for the economy purposes, that's a good thing.
Can you not respond to that? I want to speak to that because there actually been no evidence ever presented that any of these people buy anything in town. And I don't think it's a great idea to buy anything in town. I don't think 99% of the people even know that the show could go on. So that argument, you know?
Ms. Celeberto, thank you. No, that's, I appreciate it. Any other comments from the general public?
Yes, Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Ness Terrace, Narragansett. So if I was on the council, I would say, what's the cost benefit? What's the cost to the town to have this there at that location? Is any harm being done to the grounds? Is it hurting us in any way? And, I mean, in regards to the donation... And, I mean, in regards to the donation, well, we can always ask them, saying, you know, would you, would be willing to give? You know, I don't know how many cars show there, but I know they're up for sale. But maybe, would you be willing to contribute $500 to the Narragansett Lions Club? They might say, yeah, no problem. I mean, if you divide $500 by the amount of people who are showing their cars, the price would be nominal. I mean, but I don't know if that's a game changer to say, you know, it's not, we're not gonna allow you to have it, or show, show up down here. But on the other hand, it, it never hurts to ask. So in any event, like I said, the last four, I guess 14, 14 years, it's been there. So previous town council, I guess, never had an issue with it. So, you know, I don't, and as Councilwoman Vignali said, you know, when people do go out, go out and about, it isn't another attraction where people are gonna be in the area. I don't know if they have food trucks that sell food over there, or whatever it might be. But, so, like I said, it's, we don't have to have a police presence there. So it's not like a road race, where when we have a road race, we do ask, I guess, for a donation to, you know, offset the cost for the police and whatnot in the running of the race. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, anyone else from the council have any final thoughts?
I just, I, I think there's good, you know, thoughts there from people, and I just don't know how you'd manage that. I mean, the Rotary Club, you don't wanna charge them because they're a philanthric operation.
Philanthropic.
Philanthropic. I'm not sure about the BMW Club. If they pay rent, or they have a membership fee that, I don't, I don't know. But I, I do like going by there and seeing things like that in the summertime. I really do. And I think it adds to our town. It might take away a little bit of parking, and it might be confusing for some, but I think the overall benefit is, is, is good. And I was in Jamestown yesterday to get out of Narragansett because we had such a busy weekend, and I went over there, and I thought it was gonna be quiet. And then, you know, the downtown in Jamestown, they had this, there was police things going, and, you know, there's a crowd down there, and they had a concert, like, down in the Marina area. It was pretty nice. I just think that's important for us, because I think our residents in general, and the majority, appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Pardon me, Council President, we just need a first and second on that, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's, good practice. Is there a motion to approve the request from the Boston Chapter of BMW CCA Rhode Island Group for the annual BMW Show and Shine Car Show at Veterans Memorial Park on Sunday, August 24, 2025, subject to state and local laws?
Still moved.
Any files?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Colonies, seconded by Counselor Durkin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Next, on to old business. Is there a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking at Leroy Thompson Memorial Park, AKA Boone Street Playground, to playground parking only from dawn until 9:00 o'clock p.m. with a three-hour time limit?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Vignali?
I, this is the same motion that was put forth at the last meeting, and I think it's caused a little confusion among residents. And so I'd like to just take a minute to try to explain exactly what this will do. Currently, at the park, I know there's many times I've driven by, and I'm sure there's many times people have driven by, and the parking is full, and there's absolutely no one in the park. And I think that's due to the fact that, right now, the way it is written, the sign is written, parking for the park only is non-enforceable, because it is not an ordinance. There's no ordinance to enforce the rule. So what we're finding, or what I was finding when I was driving by, was that you had people who were parking there to go to the businesses in the area. I actually witnessed some employees of the various businesses parking there. And they go in and they park for the day while they do their eight-hour shift. Or you have people who are coming in who are looking for parking for the beach and can't find it, and they park there, and they, they're willing to walk down to the beach to enjoy the beach. And so the parking is being used for all reasons other than just for the people to use, residents to use the park. I, I believe that those parking spaces should be used for park parking. I believe that people who bring their children, their grandchildren, to the park should have access to parking. They shouldn't have to be unloading their children on a main road, worrying about a child running out as they're taking them out to go to the park. I believe that parents should have the right to be able to take their child to a park in that area. So right now, as a first step, what we, what I am proposing is that we limit it to a three-hour limit for use of the park. And that would, in fact, kick into an ordinance, which will now be able to be enforced. So therefore, if you see someone who's going into the park with a particular, an employee from a particular business, and they're there more than three hours, they can be ticketed. It can be enforced. And hopefully, this is the start of trying to figure out how we can get this to be incorporated into an ordinance, or whether another ordinance needs to be done, or whatever. Try this and see what we can do. It in no way takes away the parking from the park. Also, there was some confusion, which I wasn't sure where it was coming from, that it was only for the playground and not the fields. The, the parking for that area incorporates the entire complex. Everything is included. If your child is playing in a baseball game, you can go and park in that area. We can now enforce it, unfortunately, the way it is, if, if this passes. Right now, the way it's written, it is unenforceable. There's nothing we can do. And so I just thought that this was a good beginning in order to try to at least free up space for parents who want to take their child to that park.
Thank you, and I appreciate you explaining that. And I'm gonna, before I comment, I wanna open the floor up to the council to comment first. I'm gonna work down the line here. So Counselor Durkin, do you have any comments?
Yeah, how did, how did we end up with that park? Or how did, how did we, it was probably part of the whole train station thing originally, or how did? Who's Leroy Thompson? I don't.
I don't know the whole history of the transfer. It happened long before me.
And I was just wondering if there was any actual, you know, restrictions. I'm sure if somebody gave us the park, they gave us the park for a park, not for a parking lot, right? I would assume. I, I just, you know, I, I find it hard. I, I'm gonna follow, you know, I like what Donna's trying to do. I don't think it's perfect, but I think something has to be done. I've been going by that park. I actually have a picture in my phone. This morning, there was nobody parked there. Like, at like, I don't know.
Nobody.
Yeah. And, and I think that's kind of, you know, significant, because, you know, yesterday, there was no parking in the pier. And then today, it's just something that happens with these holiday weekends and, and, you know, festivals and things like that. Maybe we can, you know, I don't know, maybe during these times when we have like a car show or a, an event, like the Lions Club event, we can, you know, we can lift parking restrictions. So, you know, people can park, and there's not all this arguing going on, you know? I don't know what we're gonna do with that, but I guess me and Jason are gonna try to meet again this week, if we can. But I, I do think this is, you know, if, if the, the rest of the council wants to adjust the hours or talk about it more, I wanna hear what they have to say, because I do think it's a problem, and I think we have to do something about it. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Counselor Colonies?
So I do think there are problems there, but I don't believe in putting a three-hour parking limit at a public park. I just, it just, it doesn't fit well with my mind sight. I, again, have talked to many families that don't think that. I mean, there's events that happen there. That families stay for multiple games. I've said all this before. So I, I just don't, I just don't want a three-hour parking limit. And I would love an ordinance that says something that people can get ticketed, but I don't even know how you would enforce that for going to the beach or whatever. Anyway, I'm, I'm just not for a public park with a three-hour.
Can I, can I ask, Councilman?
Sure.
Hollis a question? Would you be open to if, if it was something that's said Monday through Friday, since all the events that you're concerned about, the basketball events that go on happen to be on the weekends? Am I, I may not be correct on that, but I should ask first. Are those, those events happening on the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays? So this is something we can do to say Monday through Friday? Is that something that would, you would be more willing to?
There are, there's also a men's basketball league that I believe meets in the weekdays. Do you know what days the men's basketball league meets? Six to nine.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm just, just throwing out different options.
Yeah, I know, I just, I mean, if they do six to nine, can't we just make it from? Again, I don't, I wouldn't vote for a three-hour limit anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
Counselor Tori Alday?
So I would just ask the members of the Parking Subcommittee what the recommendation coming out of their meeting, I wanna say last week or two weeks ago, was. What's the recommendation regarding either the passage or non-passage of this ordinance?
We didn't have a, we didn't have a formal meeting, because only one of us were there. So we just kinda kicked some things around.
Maybe Mr. Tierney could comment on the endorsement from some of the staff. I think that was shared.
You know, this isn't new, first of all, and I, I just responded to an email from someone in town. They may even be here this evening. I'm going to repeat some of what Donna said, but what I put in the email, currently, there's no ordinance that allows the police to ticket cars that are not using the park during the operating hours of the park. The signage has been there for years, many years, but there's no ordinance. This is not the first time it surfaced, unfortunately. Some folks have no conscience, and they'll park there, taking spaces for families and their children, or for a pickup basketball game. And I think one of the discussions I believe I had with Donna was that the, the people, the public has to learn about it if this gets adopted. It's kind of like an educational process, too, as well as an enforcement. And the agenda item that was proposed is an effort to adopt an ordinance specifying that parking in the lot during park hours is for playground use only. Extremely difficult to enforce based just on that title. But the purpose was to preserve spaces for the playground during the time when the playground is open. And there was some time limits discussed, and I understand there's different viewpoints on that, or whether there should be any at all, and that's where it stands now. I mean, the police chief, as far as enforcement goes, it's unenforceable, obviously, as it is. There is no ordinance. If the sign just says playground parking only, it's very difficult to enforce. The police use a great deal of discretion in dealing with some of these things, but just playground-only use? Do you want the police walking through the crowd, "Is that your car? Is that your car?" I don't think we want that.
Counselor Tori Alday, any other comments?
I, I think the only thing that I would like to add, you know, and I don't necessarily know how feasible or enforceable this is, but just language surrounding, you know, parks and rec activities. You know, if they're there for the purposes of, you know, utilizing the park or the basketball courts, something in there just to, you know, kind, to kind of protect that, those people. You know, just, Donna, you had mentioned only applying this to weekdays. I, I think cutting out the weekends doesn't go to part of the heart of the issue, which I think is kind of the elephant in the room at the moment, the business right across the street. I, I think they probably see increased foot traffic over the weekends versus the weekdays, and those spots would be more likely to be filled by patrons than, you know, park users.
I agree with you. I agree that, no matter what, they're going to be filled by patrons, patrons of businesses. No matter, you know, unless we have some kind of an enforceable three-hour type of situation, I think it's easier to look at a car, to have a CSO, or someone see a car that's been there more than three hours. I mean, that's something that you can enforce. Again, you know, we don't, we can't go into the park and say, hey, by the way, is, are you parked in that parking lot? Is this your car? I mean, that's an impossible task to do. So it's a very difficult situation. My only thing would be, quite honestly, and I, I just know, I'm a grandmother. I was a mother. I took my kids to the park. I never really spent more than three hours at a park. I think when you take your children to the park, and in fairness to Jason, you know, he has two girls. They're going there, they're doing your softball game, or whatever it is. I, I think that even at that, it's, it's a different situation as far as the safety goes, because just that, it's just that as a dad, and, and this is not, you know, dads tend to take their older children to watch the games, where a mom or grandma's taking smaller, younger children to the park to play. Not that they don't go. I'm not trying to say that. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just trying to say that the chances of, the chances are that you're going to have people who are taking these younger, younger children, who have the babies in the strollers, who have multiple children with them, to the playground are not gonna spend three hours at the playground. That, that's, I guess, the only point I'm trying to make. And I'm not saying that, that people don't go and spend more than three hours, but I don't think it's as prevalent as people coming in who wanted to be there for an hour with their kids, and then take them and go home. So I don't know the answer. I don't. It's just, it's just something, an observation on my part.
Anything else? Counselor Tori Alday?
No. I don't love the idea of putting time-limited parking at a public park, but this is a fairly specific scenario that we're dealing with here. We saw many, many, many emails from residents regarding parking at the park and surrounding Boone Street. So I think this would at least be a first step to addressing those concerns.
Excellent. Thank you. So I just wanna thank Donna, Counselor Vignali, for putting this item together. I also appreciated the council's willingness to move this an extra two weeks so that I could personally get out there and see it for myself. In all honesty, at that time, I hadn't done my due diligence to get down there to Boone Street to actually witness it, talk to local businesses myself, and to see it in person. I was very surprised just how willing patrons, and call me naive, but just how willing people were to just park at Boone Street Playground. I, I was literally there for 10 seconds, and a patron pulls into the last spot available. They get out, they check their beach stuff, and then they go directly across the street to Boone Street Market. And I'm not saying this is a Boone Street Market-only issue. It's, it's, just speaks to the lack of parking in general in the Boone Street area and around town. And, you know, I grew up going to Boone Street. I learned how to play basketball there. Some say I have never actually learned and still need to. But, you know, in general, I, I myself was very surprised, actually, to hear that with signage in place, that it, it can't be enforced without an ordinance on the books. So I guess, you know, in my thought process, I'm just questioning how these signs originated in the first place, how they were ever put into place without an ordinance on the books. So this does pique my interest to ask the Parking Subcommittee to review signage in and around town, if ordinances are not on the books to enforce them. I'm just gonna start with that.
I'm sure there are.
I'm, I'm sure there are, too.
I'm sure there are. You know, times have changed over the years.
Yeah.
Processes have changed, but, and you can't enforce a parking ordinance without signage, but signage alone is not an ordinance, so you can't enforce it.
Of course. So again, also speaking to some of the commentary, I myself actually had some of the same questions that were brought up to us, but, you know, you, you look at some look at some of the language that's on the signage. Is the signage itself something that can be improved after we approve, if we approve this ordinance? Just wondering, because we're a new council, what the process would be to update and improve the language on the signage?
That would be operational on my end. Whatever you adopt will make the signs to match it.
Thank you. So again, my, I, I didn't know how I felt about it. It was a public park. I felt the same sort of hesitation, but when I went down there and saw it firsthand, it felt like a slap in the face. I'm like, how can somebody just have completely zero regard for the signage that says parking for playground only, and then hours of operation from dawn to 9:00 PM, and then it says no alcohol, no profanity, no smoking? I don't even, I can't even read what it says below that. But again, does that mean no alcohol on the playground premises only between dawn and 9:00 PM, and then you're allowed alcohol? Again, this, I know that sounds silly, but again, it's, just speaks to enforcement. Further supporting Counselor Vignali's initiative here that, you know, I don't think any of us want to put a parking restriction in place, especially on a public park. But based on the feedback that the town has shared and the inability at this current time to be able to enforce this ask, this, what seems like such, such a small request for people to consider when you're coming to a playground, to park for the intent in which it was designed for, that that's not being respected by people who are coming, that they are instead parking there because they see an empty spot, and then they're going elsewhere.
My hope is that just people will just get used to not parking there. And my hope is that employees at these businesses will start to use the shuttle. We have the shuttle running. It's in the beginning. We're hoping when it gets established, we're waiting to hear on usage of the shuttle. But if employee, employers insist that their employees use the shuttle, that that's going to alleviate some of the problems. So this is a first step. And I think this, it's a multiple layer of things that need to happen in order to try to figure out what can happen down in that area. And I, and I, I know change is hard, and I know, you know, but I think it's, it's a beginning. And I, and I feel very comfortable saying that. I, I think that, at the end of the day, it's going to help. I could tell you, I was down there and I actually watched someone pull in and park who had a, a shirt on representing one of the businesses and just got out of the car and walked into work like it was, you know, that was their parking. So hopefully, you know, we can encourage the employee, the, the businesses to get their employees not to even think that that's an option, and to, to get on the shuttle or find somewhere else. So it's, it's a beginning, and it's a, it's a change, and it's a way to get things started. And unfortunately, I think it's, it's the only way we can do it as of right now. Unless anyone has any other suggestions, I, 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 that's what I.
Well, what I would also speak to is that, you know, again, at the time in which I was there, which was on a busy Saturday morning, afternoon, it was completely full. And I know there's this concern about, well, how, how can you possibly limit people's time on the playground? That's not really what this does. This is limiting the ability for someone to take advantage of an opportunity, something that's currently not being regulated. I would rather allow the opportunity for some parking to possibly exist over a three-hour span than to have a guarantee no space all day because they're going to drink, they're going to the beach, they're going to shop, which we want them to do, but not at the expense of families and residents being able to go and use Boone Street. So that's why, again, I appreciate the two weeks that I've been able to get down there and see it firsthand. I think this is a start. I would ask that the Parking Subcommittee take a look at some of the signage in that area so that we can talk about maybe improving the language. But the three-hour parking stipulation as described, I support and appreciate that it's been presented. So with that, is there anyone from the general public who wishes to speak? I'll start with Dr. Alba, and then I will work my way across this room.
Dr. Al Alba, 24 Eagles Nest Terrace. So I do agree with Jason in regards to having some apprehension in Ryan, but on the other hand, if this is the only way we can enforce it based on what our town manager told us, then we have to do it this way. We might want to put a, a date restrictions like all the other signs, so it's during just basically, you know, like we have it on Matheson Street, and we have it on Memorial Square. There were certain date times, so that way they're obviously in the winter, when, you know, there are no, no basketball games, you know, in the middle of the winter and whatnot. Well, then, you know, if people want to park there and it's going to help, you know, people out, we might not even have a shuttle in the wintertime, right? So, so I think we should include a date on that. On another note, though, you know, when I was advocating against signage on Narragansett Avenue and Ocean Road last year, and I took the live video, on Memorial Square, we have a two-hour time-limited signage. And I don't know if we could actually review that. And, you know, I don't know why that's two-hour time limited over there. I was, I was there today, and it was a cloudy day, and they were having an event at the Towers, and people were parking there, and they said, we're going to get ticketed, we, we're going to have to get out of our, go out of the venue, we're two hours. So I don't know if Michelle can look into that and see if maybe we can, maybe, you know, if, if they, if they feel there's even a need for signage on, on Memorial Square, because there were no businesses in that area outside of, you know, if people are going to go to the, I mean, they'll go to the beach, obviously. But, you know, like I said, I was against the signage on Ocean Road and Narragansett Avenue. And on that note, when we have the two-hour limited signage, people would park there regardless of that two-hour limited signage, regardless of CSOs going out, going around ticketing. So, and people, they don't care, they'll get hit with the $50 ticket. They don't, you know, this is the reasoning some people have, you know, if they, if they, if the west lot is full and they can't get in the north lot or the south lot. People love Narragansett Beach that much that they'll be willing to take their chances and get hit with that ticket. I worked at Georges de Galley many, many years ago when I was a teenager for Richard and Wayne Durfee, and Edna Durfee was the original owner. It was a wonderful job. I liked it. I was outside all day, got to meet a lot of people. But there were people inevitably who'd try to go onto the beach, you know, use the parking lot and go onto the beach. You know, I'd say, hey, wait a second here. You know, you got to actually go inside. You can't get a half dozen of clam cakes and then go to the beach. You know, it's like, they're trying all different kinds of ways of, you know, getting a free parking spot. But, so, I don't know if it might be worth, you know, during the peak season, time, when they have the basketball games going on, it was mentioned, or when, you know, that's, you know, have maybe a CSO stationed there. That might be a consideration. You know, Georges, Georges de Galley, they don't have, they don't have a lot of money. I mean, they have a lot, it's a good business, but it's not like town Narragansett. So if they could afford to pay me full-time, 40 hours a week as a parking lot, then maybe we can afford.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oops. And I'll go to the gentleman in the back, and then I'll go to Ms. Salaberto.
Good evening. Tom Hines, 14 Piping Plover Drive, Narragansett. At least one of my grandchildren refers to me as grumpy grandpa. Several of the others probably think the same thing, but they don't articulate it. And one of the things that makes me grumpy is the fact that for all the years that I've lived here, I think I have had one opportunity to bring my grandkids over to that park. And so when I heard that this was going to be discussed, I just want to come and support the thrust of what you're trying to do here. And I would add one little interesting anecdote, because Saturday night, this is, every day, every, the last three days, everyone's have been a Sunday. I can't, you know, Fourth of July. Saturday night, I was at the bike stop buying gift cards for a charitable event. And across the street, there was a girls' basketball thing going on. And when I came out, I saw two of the little girls come running across the street, which scared me, traffic there. And they went over to one of the cars that was parked in the parking lot for the bike stop to get whatever they wanted, then go running back across the street. So clearly, you know, there is an issue there with people. They are legitimately having access to that facility. I commend the council for looking at this issue, and I wish you good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Salaberto.
Catherine Salaberto, 48-year-old's court. Let me suggest that the Parking Committee meet, post the meeting date, and allow people to attend, and then they can brainstorm. The, the, I don't know, the wording that you have on the agenda doesn't really make any sense. The other part of it is this, you're trying to amend a street parking ordinance to cover a town-owned lot. Now, when I drove up here, I saw a 15-minute parking restriction in this lot between, what, 8:30 and 4:30 or whatever. So now, there's no ordinance that mentions that, okay? So does that mean that's not enforceable? I can go, come over here, park all day? I mean, you know, this is.
That's correct.
Excuse me? You're mixing, see, you're mixing things up, that's what I feel. You're trying to amend a street ordinance to cover a town facility. And I think that you have to go another route. The other thing is this, unless you put, you know, completely clear signs like, you know, parking for patrons only of Thompson Park and Boone Street parking, all others will be towed. So you have to threaten, because if there's no threat, they're just going to park there, let's face it. You know, most of them have no idea how much the ticket is, you know, they don't even know if they're going to get a ticket. You have to be really clear. And so I would like to see signage like that, parking only for patrons of the park and the playground. And, you know, the, the penalty, also no beach parking and the penalty. But I don't think there should be a three-hour limit. I don't think there should be times, because I think there's going to be unintended consequences. If you can't, if you can park after 9:00, what does that mean? Can you park from 9:00 PM to dawn? I mean, there's nothing that prohibits that. You need better, better wordage than you've come up with, okay? So I think this needs a little bit more work, and I'd like to see it just, I hate to delay it even more. And you know what irks me? Why do I know what irks me? I go over there every day, and there's somebody in the handicap spot. That really irks me. And I go around, I look for the placard, nobody ever has the placard. One, one day, there were kids playing basketball, so I went over to them. I said, anybody parked in that spot? And they go, yeah. I'm like, well, you got to move your car, because I'm a boat rated, call dispatch. So they moved their car. But it's, you know, here's a, here's a sign, handicap parking only, and they're not even respecting that. So you need penalties, penalties, clearly stated penalties. So like I said, I think it needs a little bit more work, and I don't think that we can amend a street parking ordinance to cover a town-owned property. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
David Bird, 23 Perkins Avenue. My property abuts the park. And as many of you know, the playground is actually for toddlers. Equipment is too small for anyone seven. You know, it's very tiny. And it is used for that a lot during the day. It also is a small baseball field. It is used by very young children. It's my backyard if anyone over 10 hits a baseball. And so it is for the young children. The basketball court's a totally different thing. It's for everyone, from toddlers to adults, obviously. But the three-hour limit and a chalk mark on a tire seems like an improvement over the current condition. We've got people parking in Bike Stop, we've got people parking in other places, on Continental. It needs to be tightened up. Ordinances need to be enforced. But it needs to be an enforcement that isn't someone standing there, because how could the town afford that on a limited space for 17? I mean, you know, ordinance enforcement, Mr. Tierney and I have talked about that a lot with noise, where it has never, ever been enforced. Never, according to the chief of police. Never. It's been on the books forever. It's relatively simple. On a noise meter, it says, you know, by use by those over 10. Well, maybe it doesn't. But that's about how sophisticated it is. But in any case, in this case, I, I congratulate on coming up with this. I think it's a good idea. Get the young children so they don't have to cross the street. That's what the park portion is, the playground portion is. The ball field's slightly different, but very small children.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this who hasn't done so already? Counselor, Ms. Lawler?
I have to come up and congratulate Donna, because I rarely get the opportunity to do that, but I think you have it right on this one, and, and Mr. Durkin as well. But most happily, I'm happy to hear the council president on board with this today. You know, this is, this, this park, if we're going to try to attract families here, we need to be able to have safe places for their families to go. It was a big milestone last year when we were able to have the lights stay on the park a little bit longer. Now, this ordinance might not be perfect, but that's the good thing about ordinances. You put them into effect, and then you go ahead and you make them better and better. And what this is really doing is just bringing in the parking to the three-hour parking that exists all over the pier that is enforceable. So, thank you, Donna, thank you, Jim, and hopefully, thank you, Alex, as well, for moving this one forward, because the families in this town really deserve this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak who hasn't done so already? All right, seeing none. Counselor Vignali, do you have any final thoughts before I turn to the council for their final thoughts?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
I appreciate it. Anyone else from the council have any final thoughts?
I just think it's the best we can do with a tough situation right now.
Anyone else on the side?
To Ms. Lawler's point, we can continue to work on this and improve it down the line. So I, I say let's, let's vote.
Okay. Counselor Coloney, since everyone else said a brief something. Nope, okay. And again, just echoing what's already been shared, it's a starting point and the beginning of, hopefully, the key word here, enforcement. And hopefully, just something in, in general that we can improve the language on, the language, we can start there and then look at else, you know, elsewhere in town as well. And again, I appreciate everyone's feedback and for Counselor Vignali for bringing this forth. So with that being said, there's a motion on the floor to introduce, read, passed, and accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four, one. Thank you. On to new business, fired, from the Fire Department. Is there a motion to award the bid for billing for EMS and Fire Department Emergency Response Services to Comstar LLC at their quoted rate of a 4% fee for the total amount collected for a three-year period ending July 7, 2028?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any questions on this? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. On to item E2. Is there a motion to approve the annual service contract for the interoperable radio communication system from Motorola Inc. in the amount of $26,843.87 for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, and to authorize the town manager to sign the contract after review by the town solicitor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We'll say moved by Durkin, seconded by Vignali. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Next, on to Public Works. Is there a motion to approve the contract extension for miscellaneous road construction, 2024, with Vinagro Materials LLC for a one-year period at their bid prices under the same terms and conditions as the original contract?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Tori Alday. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Next, on to the Engineering Department. Is there a motion to award the bid for pump station wet well cleaning to the lowest bidder, McVac Environmental Services, Inc., in the amount of $74,700?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Durkin, seconded by Counselor Vignali. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. On to the Information Technology Department. Item H1. Is there a motion to award the bid? Is there a motion to award the bid for the upgrade of council chambers, audiovisual, and presentation systems to the lowest bidder, Shanix Technology, Inc., at their quoted bid price of $61,964.57?
Second.
Any discussion from the council?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say, I don't know, many of you know that I used to teach video production, and so I did a lot of stuff with video, but I'm really excited about having this new equipment. I was talking to Dan earlier, and this is definitely gonna enhance the viewing experience for our residents. It's gonna be much clearer for them when they're watching out on YouTube. I'm also excited about hearing, having new mics, so that we can all hear each other up here. And so, I just think it's a really, really good move to have multiple cameras. They'll be able to do multiple views and, and that type of thing, and I, I think it's great.
Oh, no. So you're saying they're gonna get my good side and bad side?
That's right.
Oh, great.
That's correct.
Ah, at high def, no doubt. Oh, that's not good. All right, well, that's great to hear, especially for our viewing, viewing audience at home and wherever they may be viewing. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Looking forward to improve microphones all across the board.
Oh, that's, that's great feedback as well. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Next, onto item H2. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the SaaS application services with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of $140,245.18 for fiscal year 2025 to 2026?
Second.
Moved by Durkin, seconded by Vignali. Thank you. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Onto item H3. Is there a motion to approve the annual renewal of Asset Essentials Enterprise for fiscal year 2025-2026 from Brightly Software, Inc. in the amount of $20,322.89?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the council have any comments, questions? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Next, onto the Finance Department, is there, which is I1. Is there a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 58 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett entitled Retirement and Pensions, specifically Section 21, Definitions, and Section 32, Creditable Service?
Second.
Discussion. Anyone on the council have any final thoughts or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Next, onto item I2. Is there a motion to approve the contract extension for towed or trash bags with Fordian Packaging LTD for a one-year period at their bid prices under the same terms and conditions as the original contract?
Second.
Discussion. Any comments or questions? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Onto the Town Clerk. Is there a, item J1? So we have a few appointments possibly here, so we'll start with J1. Is there a motion to appoint one individual to a full-member seat for a term that expires on July 1, 2030, and appoint one individual to the alternate one-member seat and one individual to the alternate two-member seat for terms expiring on July 1, 2026 on the zoning board of review?
Motion to, so, Alex, can we separate this up into three different appointments? I guess we would, right?
Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
So would we need to move and second that first, or do I need to re-
Do a first and second to open the item?
Okay, we'll do a first and second.
And then start your nominations.
Okay, thank you. So, this is just for the discussion portion of this. Is there a first and second to open this up for discussion first?
Motion to open it up.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Durkin.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Torialde. Discussion. Okay, so we'll start with, first of all, I just wanna say thank you to the zoning board applicants. There were two seeking reappointment, and a series of other candidates who came this evening in the council. And those applicants on record were John Ball, David Trentisso, Karen Cutuño, Brenda Diorio Holder, and Albin Keimer. And, again, I personally was very impressed with all of their backgrounds, and I think they would all make tremendous assets to any board or committee in the Town of Narragansett. So with that being said, we'll start. Does anyone have any nominees for the full position? This is for the one, I'm sorry. Sarah, could you just remind us as to which seat is now vacant, who is no longer in that position?
The full-member seat that is vacant was due to Anthony Bernetti's term. He's, he termed out. He already served a maximum number of terms. So it's his full-member seat that's looking to be filled.
Excellent, thank you. So is there any nominations on the full-member seat for a term that expires on July 1, 2030?
I'd, I'd move to nominate Karen Cutuño. I was very impressed with her interview, as well as her experience. I, I think she would be a very qualified candidate for this board.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Or do we need a vote on that one first?
I'd like to nominate-
I think we can-
David Trentisso.
David Trentisso?
Trentisso. Only because of his previous knowledge on boards and planning. There's numerous times at the boards. Because that's a, Tony Bernetti was the president of the zoning board. So I think someone who could get in there running with that knowledge would be the most appropriate.
Okay, so there's two nominations on the floor for that full. Is there, is there a second for either of those two nominations?
Second.
I don't have a problem with either of them serving in that capacity. I think both would make a tremendous, would, would be a tremendous asset to the zoning board. I think I2 was very, I think I2 will agree with the nomination of David as well for this full position, so that's where I'm leaning, so.
I, I also agree. I, I like the fact that he's served on a board, and he, he's going in knowing. I think Karen was an excellent candidate, and I, I would strongly consider her for one of the alternate positions.
Excellent. Okay. So with that being said, is there a motion to appoint David Trentisso to the full-member seat for a term that expires on July 1, 2030?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any final discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you. Onto the appointment of one individual to the alternate one-member seat. Is there any motion to appoint one individual to the alternate one-member seat?
I'd like to appoint Karen Cutuño.
Karen Cutuño? Sorry.
To member number two seat, alternate number-
Alternate one or two?
Alternate number one seat.
Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Durkin to appoint Karen Cutuño to the alternate one seat. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any thoughts or comments from the council?
You know, I really liked her interview, and based on her experience, I think she'd be a great candidate for this position.
I agree. I think all candidates were tremendous in this position. Again, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, I think you-
No, no, I, I, I agree with, with Ryan. I, I thought she interviewed very well. I thought she would be great on, on the board. And I think, you know, her background will serve well, as far as her legal background will serve well on the board, so I, I have, I support that.
Excellent. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero, I believe, right? No, okay. And then, to the final alternate seat number two, is there any nominations for appointment?
I'm not, I'm not ready to nominate for the, I think, I'm just, I'm just not, at this time, ready to nominate for that seat.
Is it, is it possible to put that one appointment on hold? I, I don't know, is that possible to do that? James is shaking his head yes.
I believe that whoever sits currently in-
Just stays?
Alternate seat number two would be staying in that capacity unless reappointed.
Gotcha, okay.
So just so they're clear.
Yeah.
But, again, I was impressed with the feedback. I would be willing to make a nomination based on the review, but if it's the opinion of the council to postpone the appointment of alternate number two, that's fine.
Can, can you just remind us who sits in that position right now? I'm a little confused of alternate one and two.
The current alternate positions were filled by Albin Keimer was alternate one, John Ball was alternate two.
Gotcha.
They were both seeking reappointment.
Okay.
So, I'm fine if we were to reappoint Mr. Ball this evening, but, again, if it's the decision of the council to postpone this, then that's fine with me.
I also don't necessarily have the biggest opposition to reappointing Mr. Ball as alternate number two.
Okay, so there's a first and a second for John Ball. Because there's a first and a second, I can just call for a vote on that, right? Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that before we put Mr. Ball's reappointment to a vote? Okay, so there's a nomination for Mr. Ball to be reappointed to seat number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not opposed. It's a, you guys all voted aye, right?
Yeah, so are you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you. And then, onto, is that good? And sound over here?
Yeah, you were the first on that?
That was the-
You nominated?
First, well, I moved the motion, and Counselor Torialde seconded it. Okay, thank you. So then, onto item J2. Is there a motion to appoint, reappoint one individual to the Affordable Housing Trust Collaborative for a three-year term set to expire on July 1, excuse me, July 2, 2028?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Moved by Counselor Torialde, seconded by Counselor Vignali. Sorry for my own notes. And I just wanna make sure I've got my notes here correct. Are there any nominations for this position? Because I trust you guys.
I would, I would like to put forth Cliffard Tyler to a second term on the Affordable Housing. I think Cliff has done an amazing job. He's come here, spoken to us, and I, I think he's, he's an asset to that committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second for Mr. Tyler. Any comments on Mr. Tyler?
I think he's done an excellent job, and I'd like to see him continue in this role.
Excellent. I couldn't agree more. I think Cliff's done a tremendous job in his leadership capacity for affordable housing. He's been very available to any questions or comments, the many in which this council has had. And I do know that he's done his due diligence outside of regular committee work to speak with residents, to seek their opinions, as well as work up at the State House. So, I think Cliff has done a tremendous job. We're lucky to have him serve in the capacity on the Affordable Housing Trust Collaborative, and I look forward to his continued leadership in town. So, does anyone from the public have any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Onto item J3. Is there a motion to appoint, reappoint individuals to the Harbor Management Commission? Do I need to specify who's seeking at this time, or just?
You can, we only have, there's no new applications on file.
I didn't think so.
It's just the two current members that are seeking reappointment.
I'll just do this in one shot, then. So is there a motion to reappoint? They're both reappointments, right?
Joseph Vivenzio is a reappointment to a full-member seat. William Osborne would be an appointment to a full-member seat, he's currently an alternate.
Thank you. So is there a motion to appoint, I'm sorry, is there a motion to reappoint Joseph Vivenzio and appoint William Osborne to the Harbor Management Commission as full members set to expire on June 30, 2028?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Onto item J4. Is there a motion to appoint one individual, one individual to the pension board for a term set to expire on November 3, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Moved by Counselor Vignali, seconded by Torialde. Discussion.
So, I-
Go ahead.
I, I would like to put forth the name of Mark Hanley for the position. I had the opportunity to speak with him. He actually applied for the pension board because he heard our, our request for residents to become involved and become members of the board. And so I'm hoping everyone else out there will follow suit. But I spoke to him today. His background is, is ideal for the pension board, and I just, pension board was the only position he applied for, so I know he really wants it. He's very interested in giving back to the community, and I thank him for answering our call to have someone else, to have someone come forward, so.
I'll second that.
So there's a first and a second on Mr. Mark Hanley. Any other nominations?
I would nominate Melissa Jenkins. I'm having a conversation with her. She has stated that she would rather be on pension board than economic development. And, you know, having reviewed her application and her experience, I think she'd be a well-qualified candidate for this.
I would also second that nomination for Melissa Jenkins. I think her years of experience working for Brown as an educator make her more than qualified to serve in the capacity on the pension board. I think both candidates presented here, Melissa Jenkins and Mark Hanley, are exceptional and would serve on the pension board tremendously. So, because I know, and have spoken with Ms. Jenkins as well, about her desire to leave the, her willingness, excuse me, to leave the Economic Development Committee to serve on the pension board, I am in full support of her appointment. So, there are two that have a first and a second. Should I seek out, and I'm seeking advice here. Should I seek out Counselor Colonies' opinion first, or we just consider each vote separately?
Probably just each vote separately and just see how it shakes out.
Okay. So the first one that received a first and a second was Mr. Mark Hanley, so we will vote on that first. So- So...
I was under the impression there was one person.
Oh.
I'll stick with my vote.
Okay. I don't know what that means.
Mark Hanley.
Okay. Okay. So there's a first and second on here. So we'll go for...open it up to the public if they wish to comment first. Counselor...counselor, everyone's a counselor. Ms. Celebrato.
Catherine Celebrato, 48th Old Court. Okay. Does Mr. Hanley have experience with investments, finance? What's his degree? And I'm sorry, these things aren't attached to the agenda, so you can't see their resumes, you know, I don't know what they are. And that's who we need on the Pension Board, somebody who's familiar with finance and investments and understands, you know, unfunded liabilities and, and full actuarial value and things like that. So I think that's the person you have to pick. This is a money thing, you know? We're talking about money, managing money here. And so you need to pick the best person who's best at managing money. I would suggest Mr. Durkin, because we know he's pretty good at managing money. He could be on the Pension Board. Okay, you know, this is...I'm just being practical here. I'm not talking about personalities or anything, I'm just trying to be practical. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will follow up with a comment after that. Dr. Alba?
Dr. Alba, 24 years as terrace. Yeah, so I agree with Mrs. Celebrato's comment that Mr. Durkin, we all know he's a sage individual when it comes to business and finance. So he has supported Mark. I'm sure he's supporting it with justification based on his review. I'm sure he's...I don't feel he would be appointing him without him giving it good, good, good deal of thought. So Melissa Jenkins has her doctorate, she's taught at Brown. I'm putting my trust in Councilman Durkin's recommendation. So I would, I would support Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? So just as a...I...oh, sorry. I missed a hand.
Yes, he's here.
Oh, I know. Thank you. So I just will comment, and thank you for Counselor McNally for passing this over. And I'll read what it says, and that is, Mr. Hanley, excuse me, I just zoomed out, has 20-plus years as a pension plan trustee and investment committee member, and he's well-versed with many years, I won't articulate how many, versed with plan documents, investment policies, and investment strategy. Forty-year career in finance as a chief financial officer. So again, you know, we've shared some of Ms. Jenkins' backgrounds, and now we've shared Mr. Hanley's, some of his qualifications as well. And again, I think both would make tremendous assets to this board, and I think, I don't know if it was intended, but both members of the public that got up to speak, Ms. Celebrato and Dr. Alba, have both endorsed your opinion as one that, one that's actually meaningful here. So again, I've shared my feedback, you've shared yours, and with that, there's a motion on the floor for, to vote for Mr. Hanley. So all those in favor for Mr. Hanley?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I will vote nay. Motion passes three two. Do we still need a vote on the second? Okay, thank you. On to the next. Is there a motion to...item J5. Is there a motion to approve a hawkers license for Surfside Exchange Cafe LLC DBA Surfside Exchange Cafe, subject to state and local regulations? Don't all jump at once.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Moved by Torialde, seconded by Colonies.
I have to abstain because I own that property.
Counselor Durkin has expressed his desire to abstain. So unless there's, if there is any discussion, I will have to ask you to leave the stage.
No, no.
So I know, I just want to make sure that. No one has questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero with one abstention. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. On to item J6. Is there a motion to approve a victualer license for Lillian Harper Catering and Events LLC DBA West Bay Catering Company, plat N-H lot 171-A, 889 Boston Neck Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, subject to state and local regulations?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We could really use some fans in here, huh? Goodness gracious. On to item K2. Is there a motion to schedule a workshop...where are we here? We're on to the Town Council, excuse me. And just as a reminder, item K1 was pulled by Counselor Durkin earlier this evening, so that will not be up for consideration this evening. On to item K2. Is there a motion to schedule a workshop with the Town Council, Planning Board, and Town Staff to discuss one, one, potential amendment of 15% modifications to dimensional regulations passed on or about December 18th, 2023, to revert to dimensions prior to December 18th, 2023? Excuse me. And two, potential amendment to provide clarity within zoning ordinance and Town Staff on limitation of maximum of one person per bedroom and not to exceed five unrelated persons per dwelling?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So Counselor McNally, Counselors McNally and Counselors Colonies?
I think basically these are both just to align the ordinances with the state laws, which is something that we're proposing to do. So I, I think that if, in fact, that the Planning Board is looking for why we're doing something, it's because we would like to align our ordinances with the state laws as, as they are now. And we would like to also go back to just, going back to before December 18th, when, when the state law was, where the, where the 15% was prior, and the state law gave them the clearance to go a little bit more. So I think I would like to schedule that. If possible, I would like to...I don't, I don't know, what are we working on? Are we working on the scheduling motion right now, or just one...
These are both just scheduling motions.
To schedule?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So yes, I would, we would like to schedule that. And if possible, I think if we can do this on the July 28th, that, when we are already having a workshop, I think that would be great. If it, if you think that's too much, then we could pick another date. I know we were given some dates, so...
What other workshop do we have that evening? Is there...did you say there's another workshop for that evening?
Well, that, that will be the workshop.
Oh, yeah.
With the Planning Board.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I got confused. Oh, I see.
So those two would just be added to that evening unless, you know, we do have other nights. So I would suggest that if we think we can get it all in, we do it that night. If not, we move to one of the other dates.
Forgive me, I missed what was said. What's the purpose of the first July 28th workshop?
Oh, no, we're not, we haven't actually discussed that.
No, that's why it was a little confusing, because we haven't scheduled that one yet.
Just for the sake of clarity, we're only discussing item K2 right now, but what's being proposed by Counselor McNally, if I'm understanding correctly, is that both K2 and K3 could be considered at the same workshop since it would be an off-night meeting.
Correct.
And again, we can put together an agenda. After talking to our town solicitor, Callahan, this really is a scheduling motion.
Gotcha.
The agenda can...
I was confused.
No, no, I just want to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, James, that while this is absolutely necessary to communicate what it is that we would like to have a discussion on, and I anticipate fully that it's the first, not the last, discussion, but the agenda itself can be amended or, you know, discussed with the Planning Board individually between now and then as to what it is that we want to review.
Right. You set, you set the agenda in advance based on the no requirements, and hopefully it's a free-flowing discussion between the parties on the topics you choose to address.
Yep. Thank you. So again, and just to, I appreciate the, you know, just the whole clarification of the intention.
Thank you.
And I think the, just in general, I think this is what you've alluded to in the past, that this is a great opportunity to start the process over.
Absolutely.
To, you know, have that interaction with the Planning Board, staff, Town residents, if we have time. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of talk and collaboration throughout this entire process. We want this to work. So again, continue to come to the workshops if you can. Send us questions that you want answered, because we don't know all the answers.
Absolutely.
So that's why we're having these workshops.
That's why we're having the workshops.
That's what we intended to do in the first place, I think.
Right, exactly.
So again, I think, and again, I appreciate what's been presented here. So again, this is only a scheduling item. Do you have a time proposed for the December...oh, December, goodness gracious. Do you have a time proposed for the meeting on July 28th?
Six, six o'clock, I guess. I guess if, if K3 was before K2, this would be an easier discussion. If we, if we finalize the workshop schedule for the 28th and voted to it, then it would be easier to just include this in that workshop.
I was just going to ask for the stipulation that if we're going to determine the day, that we also determine the time in the voting.
Okay, yeah.
That's all. I think we're agreed upon that July...what is that, 28th? July 28th would be fine.
I'm open to time.
I personally, I personally would prefer earlier, the better. I would prefer 5:30.
If what you're saying is, we're talking about the other workshop to happen on the same evening, then I would prefer it to be earlier, too.
Fine, fine. I'm good, I'm good with, with anything.
And just as again, a point of reference, that there is no expectation, that we absolutely have to get through it all. We just want to be able to address and have that conversation on as much as we can without abusing time.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, okay. So my recommendation again also will be to the council to send any questions to the Planning Board, or to me, or to Jill, that you would like to have addressed at this workshop. Again, I think this is a great opportunity for us to engage in a conversation, not have it be one-sided, but it's expected to be very conversational. So just between now and then, that's just, would be my recommendation, so.
I just got to say something, in that there's a chance I might not be able to attend on July 28th, in which case I'd advocate for the 13th. But understood, if it's a little of the council to go with the 28th.
I think, again, I appreciate your transparency on that. I think July 28th, if we have a majority here that can attend, that's fine, and I don't think anyone will hold it against you if you're not present.
What was the other date that...
August 13th. I was just going to say, again, just being mindful that if, like, in all likelihood, that we don't cover everything that we want to on the 28th, that we could still schedule another workshop.
So is there a date that we can do it before the 28th?
I wouldn't do it before the 28th. I don't think, no.
So who come up, who came up with the August date? Where'd you come up with that?
July 28th, August 6th, August 13th, and August 20th are the four dates that were shared by Ms. Sabo.
Does August 6th work for you, Ryan?
Um...
Where's that?
It's a Wednesday.
Hmm. Yeah, I could, I could do the 6th.
Are you 100% sure? No.
I'm traveling the weekend before, but I should be back by then.
Okay. I don't have any opposition to it. I would prefer the 28th, but if we have to...
I just, I just noticed my, we have a wedding up there in Vermont. My wife said maybe we could stay a couple extra days now.
On the 28th?
I have a wedding the weekend of...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're, you're out, down and out for the count. Okay. And James, do we have any confirmation of availability, since this is an off-night meeting, for August 6th?
I'm not sure what...
Actually, there was a problem with our solicitors, too, on the 28th, wasn't there?
There was a confirmation, I believe, for July, July 28th.
I think...
We got the okay on that?
We could make the 28th, at least I can be here for the beginning part if you start early, and then the 6th, I'm not sure. I haven't checked with anyone on that. I didn't anticipate that date.
Yeah, you know, it's...tell Becky, I'm sorry.
All right.
You know, we don't, you know, I don't know.
Then let's, let us, let's schedule...
I didn't know about...
We'll set the, we'll set the time for August 6th, and I just ask that we receive confirmation from at least one of our solicitors that they be available. If not, then this get readdressed at the next meeting.
We'll figure, we'll figure something out.
Okay. Thank you. So with that being said, we're on item K2. Is there a motion to schedule this workshop as described in K2 for August 6th at 5:30 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Lastly, item K3. Is there a motion to schedule a workshop with the Town Council, Planning Board, and Town Staff to discuss coastal and freshwater overlay districts?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I think we're on the same agreement, that we would like to consider this as well, if time shall allow, on August 6th at 5:30 PM.
Just cleaning up, sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alex, we just need the first and the second, please.
I was moved by Colony, seconded by Counselor McNally. Oh, that's all right. And then is there a motion, just as a reminder, as we close next meeting, I will not be present due to a previous engagement on July 21st. So President Pro Tem Jim Durkin will be running this meeting in my absence. Is there a motion to adjourn at 9:06 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.